It is six o'clock on January 18th, 2023. This meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called to order. I note for the record that this meeting is being offered remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. If anybody is recording this meeting, please notify me at this time. All right, seeing none, I note for the record that in attendance tonight are myself, William Ramsey, Chair, Board Member Liz Klein, and Board Member Joe Fisher. Please stand and place the flag of our nation for those willing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Liz, you ready to proceed?
I am.
Joe, you ready to proceed?
I am.
All right, I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the minutes dated January 10th, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the potential appointment of police candidates. Potential candidates tonight include John Krenier, Jacob Foss, Gina McCarthy, and Justin Worth. What I'd like to do is call Chief Jones and Deputy Chief Ryan O'Shea up to join us this evening.
Evening, Chief.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how about you?
Great. Chief, if you could just go over the department's recommendation on the candidates and any information about the backgrounds of the candidates that might be helpful to us in making decisions this evening, that'd be great.
Absolutely. So, I'd like to start just by saying how fortunate we once again are to have such quality candidates before us. We're really lucky in Hingham to have such a great pool to pick from. This process started in early November when we called for the eligibility list from civil service. The candidates were then assigned a background detective and screened with an in-depth background investigation that lasted several weeks. The candidates were next invited to participate in interviews by both the Select Board and a police interview panel. During this process, all the candidates displayed a high level of maturity and professionalism. They all showed a genuine desire to serve our community and have the opportunity to give back and to help others. Most importantly, they all exemplified our department's core values of integrity, service, excellence, and leadership. The candidates that the Board offer a conditional offer of employment to will be tentatively attending the MBTA Police Academy, which is scheduled to begin on February 21st of this year. There's one candidate who would not need to attend an academy due to the fact that he's already a certified officer. Then enter the academy, and it's approximately six months, which put them out in the summer, and then they'll have a minimum of three months' field training before we get to see them on the road. So it'll be about a year total process from November. So, I submitted a letter of recommendation to the Board. Basically talked about this process I just outlined and their performance on the interview panels, and asked the Board to consider offering conditional offers of employment to Jacob Foss, Justin Worth, John Krenier, and Gina McCarthy.
Chief, thank you. Deputy Chief O'Shea, anything to add?
No, I just echo the Chief's comments that it's been tough, both on the fire and police side, to get as many candidates as we used to, but the candidates we do get are top-notch, so we're, once again, very lucky to have four outstanding candidates.
Excellent. Joe, any questions for Chief Jones?
I do, actually, for the Chief and the Deputy Chief, I just wanted to ask on the record, do you have any reservations about any of these candidates?
I have no reservations at all, no.
Deputy Chief?
No reservations. We've done a very, very thorough background investigation and very confident in these candidates.
What we saw at the last meeting was exceptionally impressive and looking forward to proceeding with this. Thank you.
Liz, any questions for the Chief?
Well, thank you for explaining the process. I also was very impressed with all of the candidates. I think you all mentioned leadership, community policing, respect, and certainly exemplified the values that we share. Can you just talk about the number of positions and the budget available?
So, these are, yeah, the four positions are all currently budgeted positions, and they're due to retirements and transfers.
Okay. Thank you.
Great, all right. Tom, do you have any recommendation on the potential appointment this evening?
So, I've had a chance to speak with the Chief. He's explained his recommendations. I'm comfortable with those. I can tell you that the budget can accommodate for the four vacancies.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Tom, Liz?
No questions. I reviewed all of the information. Thank you for sharing that with us, the background information and interview summaries. Thank you.
All right, then the Board will come to deliberate on this matter. Let me start with you, Joe. Do you have any comments or anything you'd like to add before we vote on the matter?
As I said before, I've been very impressed with the qualities, leadership, dedication to the town, compassion, and also a sense of humor, which is quite important when you're interacting with the public. And I think the town will be well-served if these candidates are appointed. Thank you.
Liz, any comments, or?
Agreed. I think, you know, you can grow here and learn within this department and really be a great part of the community.
Great. Thank you both. I do have a couple of comments I want to make briefly. You know, I was thinking back this evening to about 28 years ago when my brother was hired by the Police Department. And the town was a little different back then. People sat in these three seats were a gentleman named Marty Crane, Kathy Reardon, and Iris Dagel, three good friends of mine. And the guy running the department was a wonderful guy, an old Marine named Chief Prowowski. But there are a lot of things in this town that haven't changed. And the biggest thing that hasn't changed is you are being hired tonight into this department, but you're being welcomed into the HPD family. I can, I speak from personal knowledge when I tell you that tonight. And Chief Jones wants you to succeed, the three of us want you to succeed, and this community wants you all to succeed. And, you know, based on, you know, what I heard from all of you last week and what I saw in your resumes, you know, John, Jacob, and Gina, if your service to this community is as good as your service to our country, then we will be very well-served. And Jake, if your service is half as good as your dad's, then this town will be extremely well-served. And Justin, you know, one of the things that stood out for me was your involvement with high school children. And as you know, this department has extremely high focus on community policing. And I sincerely hope that maybe some of your efforts there can help some of our younger residents as you develop in the department. And my last thought is this: When my brother came back from being interviewed, I remember just how happy and proud my family were, was, my mom and dad and myself, and I hope that your family has that same kind of moment this evening. So, with that, I would entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to extend a conditional offer of employment to Jacob Foss as a permanent police officer for the Town of Hingham. This offer is contingent upon the successful passing of all required medical and psychological screening examinations and all other requirements related to, but not necessarily limited to, the following: A, successful passing of the required medical examination; B, successful passing of the required psychological screening process; and C, subject to an available appropriation and any and all other requirements as mandated by law or regulation.
Second. All those in favor, Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries unanimously, and I would take a second motion.
I move to extend a conditional offer of employment to Justin Worth, John Krenier, and Gina McCarthy as permanent police officers for the Town of Hingham. This offer is contingent upon the successful passing of all required medical and psychological screening examinations and all other requirements related to, but not necessarily limited to, the following: A, successful passing of the required medical examination; B, successful passing of the required physical abilities test; C, successful passing of the required psychological screening process; D, successful passing of all other requirements for the entrance into the police academy; E, entering into a satisfactory agreement with the Town of Hingham relative to repayment of the $4,650 recruitment training fee and cost of any initially issued police equipment if the appointed officer ceases employment with the Town of Hingham Police Department within the first five years; F, successful completion of the police academy as determined by the police chief; and G, subject to any available appropriation and any and all other requirements as mandated by law or regulation.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries unanimously. So congratulations to all of you.
Congratulations.
All of you, good luck getting to the academy. Jake, we'll see you tomorrow in zero eight.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations. All of you, good luck getting to the academy. Jake, we'll see you tomorrow in zero eight. Good luck, guys.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Yes, congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Yep. Congratulations. See y'all outside. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, good night.
All right, next item on the agenda is to consider approval of two special one-day wine and malt beverages licenses to Friends of Hingham Cemetery Incorporated for the 2023 Dead of Winter Art Series to be held at Ames Chapel on February 2nd, 2023, and March 4th, 2023, from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. And do we have John for this this evening? John Davenport.
Were we expecting him?
All right, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna, I'll just hold this agenda item and maybe we'll, I don't see him on the Zoom. Okay, we'll just hold this one until later. All right, next item on the agenda then is to consider a submission of Select Board-sponsored warrant articles for the 2023 Annual Town Meeting. I'm going to start this evening with Article D with this Personnel Board Report, so Tom, you want to take us through this one?
Sure. So, this is an annual article. It's, will, this article will include the salary increases, fringe benefit changes, job classifications, and any amendments to the personnel bylaw. We should get that report from Personnel bylaw sometime around the end of February, as we usually do, and at which point we'll bring this article back to you for a vote of favorable action. Thank you.
Liz, any questions?
Just, we're not expecting any major changes, right, since the last classification and salary?
No, yeah, no. It'll be the, it'll be a very standard article this year.
Okay, great.
Last year was the change.
Yes.
Joe, any questions?
Yeah, am I correct that this only applies to non-school personnel?
That's right.
Okay, no other questions?
What I'll do is I'll, I'll kind of take them in order, but we'll vote them all at the end. But let me just see if any members of the public have any questions or comments on this warrant article. All right, seeing none, we'll now turn to Article O, which is Acceptance of Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5N. And we do have Keith German with us tonight, so Senior Chief, come on up here if you'd like. Sure, whatever, whatever's easier for you.
Bill, Michelle might, I don't want to step on this, but Michelle might be better suited to walk you through the financials.
Yeah, go ahead, financials, and you've got to fill in.
Certainly available to talk to the benefits to the veterans, but.
Perfect, all right.
Sure. So Keith did bring both of, this article and the next one, to our attention this year, and both of them would offer additional tax exemption to certain groups of residents. So this first one, Article O, right now the town already has in place a Veterans Tax Work Off program that Keith and his office administer. But what this article would do essentially would confirm acceptance of that, of those provisions to allow that. But right now, that program is capped at $1,500 per year per person, and because the minimum wage has changed in recent years and increased, we can actually base it off of 125 volunteer service hours instead. So at the new minimum wage rates, that would make people eligible for $1,875. So essentially making this change would allow folks who participate in the program to earn an additional $375 each year in terms of tax work off from their property tax bills. And we're bringing these two forward, these two articles forward, knowing that the town is proposing an operating override this spring, and as we've been looking at different ways of extending tax relief to folks, we thought that these two would be worth bringing to your attention this spring.
Great. And how many people, I know the program is capped, right? We only have a certain amount of veterans in the program.
Correct. When we initially adopted this several years ago at town meeting, it was kind of a pilot program at the time, and we had that for 10 veterans who qualify. The most to date I've ever had is six apply in any given fiscal year, because it's a fiscal year program. And the minimum I've ever had is four, so over the last 10 years, simple math, it's 50% filled.
Okay, great. Well, I know that it's a great program, and I know that, you know, the veterans that are involved with it do great service to the town, and they appreciate the benefit that they get from doing it as well, so. Liz, do you have any questions?
No questions. I think this is great. Thank you, Keith, for bringing it to our attention.
Joe?
How is this communicated to veterans?
So currently, we have that on the Veterans Services for the Town of Hingham website. It's under Benefits and Taxes, Property Taxes. It's also a flyer was mailed out recently. You may even have the date. I mean, it was very recent, within the last two months.
Yes.
All the homes that pay property tax, a flyer that was made up by our assessor Erin Walsh and her staff, and I'm sure Michelle was the co-author of that as well. So that went out, and they can find it as simply as going to the assessor's office as well. It's well-posted down there.
Great, thank you. No other questions?
Great. Do any members of the public have any questions or comments about this proposed warrant article? All right, seeing none, we move to the next one, which is Article W, Acceptance of Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 50, sorry, Section 5C and a half. So go ahead, Michelle, if you want to start off, and then we'll go to Keith.
Sure. So this is another exemption that Keith brought to our attention this spring, and this is a bit broader. So what this would essentially do if the town would like to take it up would allow us to increase by 100% all of the other exemptions that are currently offered by the town, with the exception of the new senior means tested tax exemption. So on the second page here, our assessing department is doing some research and looking into the different exemptions right now that veterans in different categories get, folks who qualify for senior exemptions, blind exemptions, et cetera. And it would double those amounts starting in FY '24. So right now, there's about 127 people who participate in these programs, and the exemptions total about $75,000. So if we did want to increase this by 100%, we'd be looking at a financial impact of another $75,000, so for a total of about $151,000. In speaking with Erin, our Director of Assessing, we're comfortable that we could fit this in our overlay budget, so there wouldn't be like an additional tax impact on folks, but it would allow us to offer, again, more tax relief to a number of people qualifying for these exemptions.
So if I could add in also, there hasn't been any changes occurred in this law for several decades. Other cities and towns have adopted along the way, under other Acts, ways to use the CPI to increase each year and tally that up that way and take care of it that way. We have not. We haven't moved, and with the current national inflation crisis, you know, I think it's time for us to assist the small segment of our population who's given so much to our community, state, nation, and asks for so little in return.
Great. And Keith, so how do veterans qualify for this exemption?
So the Clause 22, which is what these are, and I will point out to you on your example, Michelle, under Veterans 22 exemption, it says currently $400 would increase to 800. Those are men and women of the society that are veterans that have a 10% to 90% service-connected disability. What's not shown as the example, and I'm sure this is still a working document, is 2A and 2B. Those are for special incidences, missing limbs, special adaptive housing, et cetera. 22E is for those members of the population that are 100% service-connected disabled.
Got it, okay.
So currently in the Town of Hingham, there's approximately about 8,800 homes, is that right, Michelle? 8,800 property taxes?
Yep.
There's 170-plus, there's 171 service-connected disabled veterans in this town, and there's 19 widows, which are also captured in this current tally. Not all of those, of course, are property owners. So you can see how that's, even that number, even if we were to add those numbers together and use that, we're talking less than 200 people, and there's 8,800 properties, and it's less than the 200 because not everybody owns property.
And it's, and you qualify from a VA disability rating?
Correct. You would bring your VA letter in to me, I would verify it, vet it, stamp it. You then bring that down to the assessor, they would hand you what we commonly call the green sheet, or it's the exemption sheet for veterans. You fill that out for, as a first-timer, if you just got a service-connected disability, and then every year, a woman down there, Cecile?
Cyril.
Cyril, she mails that to you. So every year, you'll get that in the mail, usually around August or Labor Day. You have about 90 days to submit that application. From this day forward, there is no longer any other documentation needed. So once you're in the club, once you're a club-carrying, cod-carrying member, you're in. No more documentation is needed. But to initially do it, it has to be vetted first, stamped, and then turned in.
Is, so is this the CPC tax, right? They exempt you on CPC, oh, okay, no.
No, so this is.
Real estate tax?
It's just real estate.
This is your personal property tax, and these are exemptions that are already in existence, 400 through $1,000. And what we're asking tonight is to double those, because it's been decades since that law went into effect, and we haven't moved, we haven't moved the chains.
Okay. And does, does the amount increase based on your rating? For example, you mentioned 100%.
No.
Oppose the sum with 30%. Would the 100% disabled vet get more of an exemption than the 30%?
Yes, so the 100% disabled vet is under Clause 22E.
Okay.
100% disability equals $1,000 off your annual property tax, annually, usually recognized in the fourth quarter, but it's spread out over all four quarters, right? So your fourth-quarter tax usually is lower, but.
Got it, understood. Okay, great.
And then 10 to 90 is $400.
It's the same amount. So if it's 90 or 10, it's $400, and the 100% gives you a higher amount.
And if you remember, I'm sure you do, that when we had that tragic loss of life and we had our first Gold Star family here in Hingham, they too became eligible. There are some other special, you know, in the minutia, in the devils in the details, right? Gold Star parents are eligible for $400. I thought to myself, $400. 100% disabled veteran only gets $1,000, and someone who's lost their life, their son or daughter, got $400. I brought that to attention to our state rep, Jamie Murphy, in the other districts, District 2, and he brought that forward to the great general court. Sometimes they don't know that that exists. When that was brought to their attention, and you do the math, you're actually putting a price tag on that young man, a woman's head, for service to our nation, and that the Commonwealth no longer needs your tax money. So they're totally exempt, and that was something we worked through Hingham here that went Commonwealth-wide. And that's Clause 22G. H, H. So that was enacted, and those aren't covered because they're already tax-exempt. There's a 22D, that's also 100% exemption, that's a widow of a serviceman who dies in the line of duty and/or from an injury or illness incurred from that. Why do I mention that? Because right now, we're having a vast amount of number of men who are perishing from the effects of Agent Orange.
Yeah.
They had a service-connected disability, but now they die 40, 50 years later. That widow is now entitled to property tax exemption in total.
Excellent, thank you. Joe, any questions?
Yeah, to what extent is this transferable if someone moves from Hingham to another community?
So there is part of that green sheet. I don't know the exact process. It would be more something that the assessor's office would be able to tell you about, but they're able to match that through a system. So if you owned a property in, say, in Nantucket, and you wanted to get your Hingham exemption and your Nantucket exemption, it won't, it won't do. Obviously, it would be for you, the member, to take the higher, the higher tax, but you're only allowed one.
Got it, okay. No other questions?
Liz?
Just kind of a logistical question. Do we have to, are all the exemptions covered under the law with this article, or we don't have to do each one? I just want to make sure we're comprehensive in all of the available exemptions.
I believe.
Like, anything that's allowed under this law, we're talking about doubling. Is that right?
Right.
Okay. I just want to make sure that's covered.
The one exemption, or exception that I know of, is the new senior means tested tax exemption, because that's separate from what's included here.
Okay.
Right, so veterans are only in one clause, and it's called Clause 22. So there's a 22 proper, and then there's an A through H. So yes, we'd want to verify that before we go to print, I guess.
And I'm not sure if that's something that John Cofflin may know. I know he's on the line, but we are still reviewing some of the state guidance here, and we'll work with Keith and the assessors to make sure we, when we bring this back for a hearing and to AdCom, we'll have all the information.
Okay, great.
And like I mentioned, I believe some of it was omitted because it's already assumed. Those are already 100, you can't get over 100%, so.
Sure.
They're already being exempted in total.
And I think the way it works, Keith, is I think Chapter 59, Section 5, has dozens of exemptions.
Yes, sir, it does.
This, anything that's under 59.5 would be doubled by adopting 59C and a half, is the way it works. So you'd have to look at all those exemptions under Section 5, and each one of them would be eligible to be doubled, not just the veterans piece, but all of the exemptions.
Which I think she has pretty much outlined here. The only thing I didn't see in your addendum or your extra sheet of paper here is, under veterans, there should also be a 22A and B. That's the only thing I see that was in my swim lane that was not put on here. A is 750, so you would double that to 1,500. B is 1,250, you would double that to 2,400.
We don't need to make that change tonight, right? No, the article, yeah, the article that speaks to the, the article speaks to the legal language.
The Town Council, it's correct. It's all, they're all covered in there. Each one is called out by letter, numeral and letter.
Okay.
Each one, all the way down.
Any other questions, Joe?
No.
Liz?
No other questions.
Thanks for doing this. Well overdue, like you said, it's well overdue and certainly worthy to increase the amount. Any members of the public have any questions or comments about this potential warrant article? All right, seeing none, I would move next to Proposed Article R. R, which is Building Department Fees. We got, I think Mike Clancy's going to walk us through this. All right, do you want to start off?
If I may, let me jump in and certainly, Mike, anything I miss or any questions, don't hesitate to chime in. Articles R and Article Z both accomplish the same things, but for different types of fees related to new projects that are under Building Departments purview. Article R is all about plumbing and gas permit fees. The purpose of this article is to update the fees as well as to provide the Select Board going forward the ability to adjust the fees from time to time as the Select Board may see fit, rather than leaving that decision going forward to town meeting. Article Z does the same thing, but it focuses on electrical permit fees. It updates the permit fees. In both cases, our fee schedules haven't been updated for several years, and like Article R, Article Z provides the Select Board the ability to update the electrical permit fees from time to time as you see appropriate.
All right, thank you.
So that's it in a nutshell.
Mike, anything to add to Art's presentation?
Well, sure, thanks for having me tonight. I couldn't make the meeting in person, but what this is, is to bring the town fees up to the surrounding 11 towns as far as to almost mirror what their fees are. We are right in the middle, we're not the highest, and we're not the lowest, but it's to, you know, provide the public safety and inspection. For instance, right now, if we did, this is on the building side, but if we did a certificate of occupancy, we charge $35. However, it costs the town $60 to go out and do the inspection and to do the, you know, the paperwork and things, so we're just trying to bring the fees up to cover the costs. We're not the highest, and we're not the lowest, but it's to, you know, provide the public safety and inspection. For instance, right now, if we did, this is on the building side, but if we did a certificate of occupancy, we charge $35. However, it costs the town $60 to go out and do the inspection and to do the, you know, the paperwork and things. So we're just trying to bring the fees up to cover the cost for the building department.
Mike, thank you. Liz, any questions?
Just to build on that, Mike, I think, I mean, that's why we wanted to reassess and look at the fees. So just to confirm that with these increases, it will pay for itself, right? The plumbing, it covers the cost of the plumbing and gas and the electrical work that needs to be done?
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you.
Joe, any questions?
Mike, do you have a spreadsheet or something that shows where the town is currently and where it will be if these fees are adopted? I know you mentioned this will bring us to sort of the middle of the pack, but I haven't seen that analysis. Is that available for us to review?
Sure. I'll just give you a comparison of what the new fees would be to the surrounding towns.
Sure.
For instance, when the fees were adopted back in 2009, the average home had 11 inspections. Today's day, the average home has 22 inspections between building, electrical, plumbing and gas, HVAC, and things of like that. But for instance, for a 2,500 square foot home, and for the plumbing fees, it would cost you $200 in Hingham. For the new fee, the new fees, the fees that are in, for instance, coacid, it's $200 for the same amount of work. Norwell does this a little bit differently. They start with 150, and then they charge $20 for each fixture. So if you had a bathroom with four fixtures in it, you'd be over $200 in Norwell. Most of the homes in Hingham, the new homes are having four and a half bathrooms in it. So again, we are right in the middle. Beckbury, for instance, they charge a minimum for a 2,500 square foot home of $295. Monseal charges $300. Rockland charges a little bit less of $185. Hanover would be the same as us, at $200. Olive charges $325, and Brinkley charges $300. So we're right above in the middle for the fees.
So tonight is just the submittal of the article. Before you are asked to take a favorable action vote, we'll absolutely get you that comparison.
Great. Do you have any discretion on these fees? If someone comes in and presents a hardship, do you have the ability to say, well, I understand, and, you know, we can reduce them? Or is it set, and that's it?
When that does cap it, we usually send it up to the selectmen and have them weigh in on the fees and things if it's a hardship. It's not something that I would take that upon myself to say if it's a hardship or not. I think it would be the selectmen's purview to do.
Got it. Thank you. No other questions.
All right, anything else to add?
Nothing to add.
Okay. Yeah, so obviously, the vote tonight is to put it on, I guess, to place it on the warrant, but whether or not we're going to move forward with it, it will be a vote at a later time. Like, I think as Joe kind of alluded to, I need to learn a little more about it, too. And Mike, I appreciate the background, but I need to sit with you and just learn a little more about the process, where how fees are assessed, and also the data, how we compare to other towns. But this was helpful this evening, Mike, so thanks very much. Any members of the, any members of the public have any questions or comments on this proposed warrant article? We move to the next, next item, which is Article X, which is the senior center feasibility study. Tom, you want to take that one?
Sure. So the, so Article X, this is, this is simply amending an article that was passed in 2020 to appropriate $525,000 to design and permitting, et cetera, for a new senior center. But that one was tied to this address here at 210 Central Street. What we're recommend, what we're putting before the town now is to free up the use of that money to identify any appropriate other sites that may come up through analysis. So while we intend to still do a preliminary design and feasibility study for this location, we may decide that it's pertinent or prudent to do that level of analysis on a different site as well. We already have the money appropriated in 2020, and we simply want to, to be able to use that, those funds to do that work on other sites in addition to the site here.
Great. Tom, thank you. Joe, any questions?
So just, I'll ask the obvious question. So when this was appropriated, 525 was sort of the amount identified to do one analysis.
Yes.
So now if we're considering maybe doing an analysis on two sites, we're now cutting the 525 either in half or in some other percentage, is it sufficient to do what was contemplated?
No. So I'm sorry, you're absolutely right to ask that question. I left that part out. Sorry. So what we're talking about is doing a feasibility and preliminary design, feasibility studying, preliminary design. Originally, that 525 was contemplated to get us all the way to construction. So that's through permitting and construction documents, et cetera. That is being taken off the table for the time being until we evaluate the appropriate location, which there now seems to be some interest among the senior population to make sure that the location is appropriate before we get to the stage of, you know, completing permitting and construction documents.
So we're really doing two things. We're first, expanding the number of sites, and second, reducing the scope of work that will be done at any particular site.
In essence, yes.
Okay. Got it. No other questions.
Liz?
I have heard feedback from seniors in town that they want to look at other sites, so I think this is an important step to take. My only concern is that this will slow down the construction process. So what, and you might not know this yet, but what do you see as the next steps? You know, after this feasibility and design, do we then have to go to town meeting again to get to doing the architectural engineering plans?
Yes, we would have to. Once we choose a site, so we will be able, with this appropriate, with this amendment, we would be able to spend that 525 on a couple of different sites, including the one here.
Right.
Do a comparison and analysis, socialize it with the public, come up with a location that we decide collectively that we want to move forward on, and then we would have to go back to town meeting for permitting costs and construction documents cost, after which we then have to go back to another town meeting with cost of construction. So yes, this will slow the process, but I think it will get us to the site that the senior community is hoping that we, that we get to.
Okay.
Well, if I can follow up with Liz, on Liz's question. Is there a way that we can consider including in this article additional funding to make up the difference? So just in numerical example, if we cut the 525 in half and we then select the site, presumably, we needed that other half to finish the work that was contemplated here. Appropriate that so we don't have to wait another year to sort of get that money, and then another year after that. I think that the timing that Liz is pointing out is...
I understand completely. The difficulty is, the reason we were able to contemplate the potential costs of permitting and design for the first, in this first instance, was because we knew that, A, we knew the site and we knew what we were working with. If we go this other route and determine a new location, whether it's Bear Cove Park or there's, you know, other locations in town people have mentioned, we don't know if we're talking about new construction or if it's remodeling an old building. We wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to estimate what the permitting and construction, or construction documents cost would be without having any idea where it would go. So I don't know how to do that.
So the only other way is to call a special town meeting so we don't have to wait the full 12 months?
Yeah, always an option.
For a capital project of this nature?
Yeah.
I would do that.
Yeah.
Right. Because I, yeah, I'd hate to, I think this is the right step in what people want, but I don't want it to delay it by a year or two years, potentially.
That's right.
Yeah, so I mean, I think what we've heard a lot is, you know, a lot of the seniors like the idea of the central location here and being part of Town Hall, but they've identified a lot of challenges with potential parking. So as we look at this site, building out this site, and we analyze the parking, we need to look at maybe the possibility of other sites, too. And then, because other seniors, other seniors have said, hey, they don't want to be here. They would like to look at maybe another location. And ideally, we come back with both options, or we say, hey, this is what option A is, this is what option B is.
Right.
These associated costs, these are what they would potentially look like, and then try to get consensus from the senior community to build the best senior center we possibly can, with the best budget we possibly can, within the best timeframe we possibly can. And the reality is this, we, you know, the three of us have said to the, to our community, you know, foster, public safety, senior center. And we got really good news about the first two. Now, now our focus is on this, and the seniors have been waiting, and we want to get this right. And, you know, what I've heard, and it sounds like you've heard the same, is not all of them are thrilled with the idea of staying there, but some are. Some are okay with it. So let's look at it, potentially other sites, and if there, maybe there is feasibility, maybe there isn't. You know, we only, there aren't a lot of, there aren't a lot of options, but there are maybe some.
Right.
And then we come back to the senior community and say, this is what we got available, and we'll go from there.
That's right.
I fully support this article.
Tom, do you know if the Senior Center Building Committee wants to take this step? Is this...
So I've explained this step to the chair, Tom Carey, who I believe has explained it to the building committee. They're aware that this is an effort that might, the select board may decide to move forward on.
Okay.
So...
And what's been the feedback from the committee?
From Tom, he understood the desire and didn't have any negative or positive reaction. Just understand, just let me know what you all want me to do. Right? He's chair on the building committee, so he'll, he'll follow his marching orders, I think.
Okay. Any members of the public have any questions or comments on this potential warrant article? All right, seeing none, let's, let's take votes.
There's one more.
I'm sorry, we do have one more. We have, sorry, Minnesota Capital Needs. We have Article Y. So we have one more, which is Article Y, Minnesota Capital Needs. And Tom, you want to take this one, too?
Sure. So this is an article that would fund needed projects that Capital Outlay and CPC are not able to this coming year. You know, we see this as a potential solution to some, you know, ongoing needs for important capital projects that those two simply can't fund. For instance, I'll give a, for instance, the property that we own at H. Short Street over recent years, for three plus, maybe five years running, that project went back and forth between Capital Outlay and CPC. And CPC, thankfully this year, just has decided to fund it, but it took a long time and a lot of conversation, and the building, I got another report last week that more chunks of the building had fallen off over the weekend. So it's time to get that building repaired, but it was taking years to do so. So we identify things like this on a regular basis, and if we don't have one of those two funding sources able and willing to fund it, then the project simply languishes. And sometimes we identify those, and it would be nice to have a mechanism for getting those projects completed. So that said, some of the ideas that we had this year for an article like this is the G.A.R. Hall and their windows project. Keith has explained to us several times that there are significant problems with the G.A.R. Hall windows over there. That's been ongoing for a number of years. DPW vehicles that regularly get deferred by the Capital Outlay simply because there's not enough capital funds. The Green Dock Building down at Bear Cove Park, which is needs, in need of repair if we're going to use it for a home base and a, and a safety zone for the Hingham High School rowing team. So in order to, for them to use that property and subsequently use the Back River, thereby getting them out of the harbor and off of Bear, uh, Barnes Wharf, we would need to improve first the Green Dock Building. So there's projects like that. The good news is CPC is, no, Capital Outlay or CPC is considering the electrification of the Green Dock Building.
Capital.
Capital. So that is on their radar. So a portion of the cost of that would be covered by one of those two funds, but not all of them. So, so there's that. This is similar in nature. If you remember, last year, we funded a Fire Capital article.
Yeah.
Which, it bought a fire, two fire engines? One fire engine, the roof over at Central, as well as a bunch of HVAC work at Central Fire. So it was that type of thing. So this is in keeping with that type of article. The details of this article won't be finalized until we get the final CPC funding schedule, which we have a preliminary version of now, and of course, when we hear back from Capital Outlay about what their funding schedule will look like. And we should have that, you know, again, by the end of February. So, so as soon as we get that, we'll bring to you all what we think would be good projects, if we have any, to put into an article like this.
Got it.
Joe, any comments or questions?
No, that was an excellent presentation. No questions.
Liz?
So specific projects and dollar amounts would be included, right?
They would be included when we get, yes. Once we flush out what happens with CPC and Capital Outlay, and then what we have remaining on our critical project list, and what we think we can fund through fund balance and what we can afford.
Right.
We have to do all that analysis first. But when you get it back, you'll get a detailed accounting of what we think should happen.
Okay.
And of course, AdCom will do its process, come up with a recommended motion, et cetera.
Right. Okay. And when we say capital equipment, capital projects, do you see preventative maintenance on buildings being included?
That hasn't come up, but that doesn't mean it's not appropriate for it. Depending on what that preventative maintenance program would cost, maybe.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, some of the other items, well, I gave you examples. I mean, it's, I could continue to give examples, but...
Sure.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't consider this as maintenance. So it would need to be a Capital Outlay that resulted in improving, diminishing the maintenance costs, but this is not for hiring a maintenance crew or anything like that.
Right, right. Yeah, this particular project is. And other ideas, the reason I hesitated is because we've, we've recently completed an ADA complacency analysis. We've got, we've got the climate action plan is coming out. Both of those are going to have implementation costs.
Right.
And we're going to have to find a place for those types of expenses as well. I'm not sure this, this type of article is appropriate, but depending on the implementation itself and what form it takes, it might be.
Mm-hmm.
So, but I generally agree that it's intended as a capital thing, not a maintenance.
Right. Okay.
The funding that was included in the article last year went a long way for the Fire Department.
Sure did.
I mean, not only for the, for the fire apparatus, but the building. It was much needed, and the projects you mentioned are very merit-worthy, and we could probably put 20 more on that list.
Exactly right. That's always the problem, though, right?
Okay. Any other, any questions or comments from members of the public? All right, seeing none, we've come to vote on the articles. Want to just take them one by one?
Well, I was going to suggest an approach, and...
Go ahead.
John, I'm going to make, John Cofflin, I'm going to make a motion, and you let me know if it's in order. I move to, to propose Articles D, O, W, R, X, Y, and Z as presented.
E, O, W, R, X, Y, and Z?
Yes, as presented.
For inclusion in...
Right. That would be for inclu, I'm sorry, for inclusion in the 2023 warrant for the Hingham Annual Town Meeting.
Yeah, just to get them for inclusion to the warrant.
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine. You can hold this one.
Yep.
Can I just second that?
You sure can.
Second.
All is a favor. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, while the motion carries unanimously.
Sorry, I didn't mean to short circuit that, but...
No, you saved us some time and some reading, so thank you, Joe. All right, next item on the agenda is a naming bylaw committee update, and I see we have Phil Edmondson on the line. Phil, good evening.
Hello, members of the Select Board.
Thank you for coming back again, Phil. Appreciate your hard work.
Great. Thanks for putting us on the agenda.
Great. Um, thanks for putting us on the agenda, uh, Phil Edmondson, the College School Chair, and in the Committee. Um, a quick update is that we heard from Attorney Coughlin about a week ago, and sent to us a marked-up version as we asked him for, um, and what it meant, you know, the language that, uh, that we might recommend and vote on, um, was, uh, had been embedded by the Town Council. The meeting's for this Friday afternoon, and it is our plan to take a vote on our recommended language. Um, as you recall, generally, uh, we seem to be in sync over our committee field, we are in sync with what we're hearing from the Select Board, in that, that the existing bylaw has, uh, much too high a burden, um, that requires too many things to go to town meeting, which in turn is discouraging, uh, support from the private community in many forms, or in a number of different working projects for the town. Um, I do believe, however, and would like to get your advice tonight if possible, uh, that some of the changes that have been recommended by Attorney Coughlin are perhaps, uh, even more in the direction than, than we had suggested, and probably the most common of which is, you may recall, that we have recommended, uh, increasing the threshold to a 25% threshold, that meaning that anything that was under 25 foot of the main building, or anything under 25 foot of the main acreage, uh, I mean, that would not require a go-to-town meeting. It is my understanding, uh, that, that you might like to recommend a high air threshold of 50%, um, uh, and, um, I would love to bring any feedback you have on that matter to the, uh, to my committee, uh, because that's a significant change. We are not aware of anything, of any projects that have been considered that would be in between these students, or probably not a hugely consequential issue. It might even be defined as more of a political issue, which is, you know, how much change should we be proposing at any point in time. But I'll, I'll stop there and see if I can get any comments, uh, from members of the board, or from Tom.
Phil, thank you. Liz, you want to start off?
Um, I think, um, you know, the 50, well, my feeling about the 50% versus the 25, um, was just to kind of streamline the process, um, and that that may make it easier, um, for us to make decisions, you know, on, on smaller projects, um, that wouldn't require the town meeting. But, um, I, I'm certainly open to discussion about it. I don't have a, a really strong feeling about it.
Joe?
Um, I, I think the, the lower threshold of 25% um, doesn't go far enough to address the concerns that we've heard. Um, and I think, uh, the 50% is, um, is an appropriate midpoint. I'm not aware, I mean, Phil, when you were here before, I think you presented the views of the committee, but I just, I don't recall, um, the, what underpinned the 25% threshold. Perhaps you can just help us with that.
Sure. Um, uh, we chose the 25% limit right now, the current bylaw is clearly 25%. And one of the two categories, I think, that we can have any percentage threshold in the other category. So we thought it would be pretty consistent to make them vote 25%. So really, we were simply following the general thesis that we want to make it easier for, uh, for public, I mean, for private funding for these worthy projects, um, by reducing the, the need to go all the way to town meeting on, on, uh, smaller projects. And that we found that sticking with 25% was a, a modest change. Uh, I don't think there's anything more scientific to it than that. I think ultimately it may come down to a political question, and, and when I use that word, I don't mean in a bad way. I mean, we recognize the judgment call.
Sure. Yeah, no, that's helpful. I mean, I think, um, what at least I had heard is, uh, that we need to move from where the town is to a, uh, a more responsive position, and staying with 25% was not that move. And I think that's, that's where I was coming out and saying, let's, let's address the concerns, uh, and we'll put it out for a vote.
Sure. I, I think I expected that to be the end of the list.
Yeah.
Which would be helpful to, um, to hear that from you. Uh, as I said, we will, um, we have one other question, which was, it was discussed, I think, in a conversation I had either with Mr. Coughlin or Mr. Mayo, the possibility, um, that the, Susan Murphy, Real Estate.
You're cutting out on us.
Yeah, you froze up a little bit. Lost you there, Phil.
For square footage or other definitions, is that still something that needs to be done, um, regarding?
Uh, you, you cut out in the middle, Phil?
We lost the first part of your question, Phil. You just, your screen froze a little bit.
Sorry, say that again, Phil.
Yeah, we, uh, we lost you on the fir, the first half of your question. Your screen froze. Could you just repeat it?
Yes, are we still waiting for advice from Attorney Susan Murphy?
Yeah, nope, nope. Susan Murphy, nope. Susan Murphy, our Real Estate Council. Sure. Uh, Susan Murphy, Real Estate Council, and Emily Wentworth, our, um, our town, well, senior planner, uh, has, uh, have both reviewed this and offered their, um, their comments. They worked closely with, uh, Attorney Coughlin and came up with what's before us.
Does the square footage definition need to be added to this?
John would be better suited to answer that.
John, is that something that should be added to Section 2 under definitions?
So the way it reads now is it's usable square footage. I'm making sure the term that we had reviewed with Emily that they used, and there's only context and other context, and she was comfortable with that term and being able to interpret it. So we could take a stab at a definition. I'm not sure, um, you know, it would have to be something like square footage excluding the basement or something like that. But I think Emily was comfortable with the usable square footage language that was in the bylaw. That was right there.
Okay.
Okay. And, and that's a term that you'll see, you know, in leases and, and, and other contracts. So I think it's a well-understood concept.
Excellent. So it sounds like that, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Phil, I'm gonna cut you off.
No, uh, I didn't mean to cut you off. I, um, I just, that's the only other point of a question that I wanted to make sure that they covered, uh, again, we will be meeting on Friday, uh, and understand the requirement to have our final recommendations and, and vote on Friday, uh, and we'll certainly inform the, uh, the Select Board on this. Uh, is there any other advice or questions you can?
No other advisory requests, just, uh, a sincere thanks, uh, for the work that you've done, Phil. And the committee's come a long way on this, and we appreciate it. Um, before I take public comment, let me see if anybody else, Joe, Liz, have anything else to add.
I just want to say thank you, Phil, for, for all of your work, but also coming in front of the board multiple times. Um, this is definitely an iterative process, and it's been very complicated. So appreciate you keeping us up to date as we move forward. I think it's, it's positioned us well to get this done by the spring, so thank you.
Any members of the public have any questions or comments on this agenda item? Seeing none. Phil, thanks again. Have a good evening.
All right.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Foster Elementary School Project Update. We have this evening with us Chair Linda Hill, Vice Chair Ray Estes, and Chris Carroll. Come on up, we'll get you another seat. All three of you, welcome to come up if you'd like. Lindy, welcome.
She's happy.
Like, no, I don't, like, no, I really want to be on camera tonight, but, you know, come on up. We'll get another, we'll get a third seat.
You got it?
Good to see everybody this evening. Thanks for joining us.
Good evening. Ray Estes, 92 Fort Hill Street, Vice Chair of the School Building Committee.
Chris Carroll, 18 Bremer Circle, uh, Project Manager.
Linda Hill, 6 Race Road, Chair of the School Building Committee.
Okay, so thanks for inviting us. Um, we're, we're working. We're moving earth. It's really exciting. Um, we wanted to take this opportunity to give you a little update. Um, we kind of did hit the ground running as soon as we possibly could. I think you have, there it is, slide deck. Um, uh, you know, really work started in earnest, um, once we, uh, finished and got through town meeting and we were able to award, uh, the bid. As you know, we, uh, bid, we're bidding this project in two packages, one for the early site work to prepare the pad for building, and then we'll build for, we'll bid for the building, uh, construction in the spring. Um, so we'd actually bid prior to town meeting, um, and was holding the, uh, award of that bid in abeyance until, uh, successful vote, which we received, obviously. Um, so once we were able to award, uh, that low bid, which was under budget, by the way, great news, um, so far, um, uh, you know, we proceeded to do kind of the preparatory work to get ready for the contractor to mobilize, um, which involved, you know, erosion controls and things of that nature, um, in kind of a preliminary, um, fashion, while, uh, stormwater protection plan, um, documentation was prepared and submitted to both the Planning Board and to Conservation Commission, as was, uh, condition of their approvals. Um, that was submitted and approved, um, I think the week before Christmas, uh, and I think we got final sign-off by, um, by both, uh, staff, uh, board staff members, maybe the Monday before Christmas, was that the 19th, or whatever that date was, the week before Christmas. Um, so we were able to keep the scheduled appointment with, um, the paving contractor to come in. One of the first things we wanted to do, um, as you know, asphalt plant, plants close when it gets cold. So we wanted to pave temporary parking, you'll see that in, in a second, um, and we were able to get that done that, that week right before Christmas, before the plants closed. So, um, we really started work in earnest, uh, just before Christmas, uh, and then hit the ground running right after Christmas, um, with kind of heavy earth-moving, uh, equipment, which was very exciting. So just kind of take you through, uh, the deck here. So one of the first things that was done was to cut in a new access road, um, here, and this you can see looking from Downer Ave, uh, I guess that's, uh, east? No, sorry, north, east, yes, looking east. Um, uh, so that will, that is now the, uh, temporary access for all construction, uh, access for the project, and will continue to be throughout the life of the project. Uh, and then will turn into the permanent access, um, around the building, um, including fire, uh, and public safety access. Um, so, you know, as you can see here in this photo, um, you know, we've already, uh, you know, begun to cut into Otis Hill a little bit, uh, in order to make that, uh, access drive. Um, and, uh, uh, you know, everything has been fenced off and protected, uh, so the public can't, can't gain access, and that was done, um, um, over the Christmas break. Um, the next slide, uh, shows, this is the access road here from the rear of the school looking west. Um, and this is a, a similar, uh, view here. Um, you can see Otis Hill here to the right, and you can see where tree clearing work, uh, was done in order to, to put that, uh, access drive in. Uh, the next slide shows temporary parking. So this is the front of the school looking north toward the yacht club, uh, and this used to be just kind of grass, uh, area. Um, and this is a temporary parking area. Um, if you recall, toward, uh, on the right side of the existing school, going towards the tennis courts, there's parking area, um, which was kind of separated out, and, and a portion of that was going to be used, and it will be used for temporary play space. So we needed additional parking for staff and visitors, um, while that is not accessible, because we needed a place for the kids to play. Uh, so this additional parking, I think it's 18 additional parking spaces that were added here, and this will stay in place, um, for some time, until, um, we move to the next, uh, actually, probably this, the last phase of construction. Um, okay, the next slide, uh, shows kind of active tree clearing work on Otis Hill, Otis Hill that was done in order to, um, not only, um, you know, make way for the access drive, but also, um, kind of begin the positioning of where the, the building pad, um, will go. Um, a lot of the stumps and branches were, were, were cleared, um, uh, had been removed. Loam is being processed on-site. Some is being carted off. We've made arrangements with, with DPW and J.R. Frye for a certain amount of loam to be retained by the town, uh, and we'll be, um, delivering that, um, when the time comes. The next slide, uh, shows some of that loam removal process. Um, and you can see, this is a site kind of looking, I guess, uh,
Top one's on the hill looking down.
Yeah, on the hill looking down
And then looking up.
onto the school, and this is the opposite direction, looking up, up the hill. Um, so you can see the work, um, that's been done. Um, right, electric and water, so good, the utility hookups are, are now, uh, in place for the, the site trailers, the construction vehicle trailers, um, which will be used throughout the project. The next slide is kind of a, a nice, uh, yeah. So this is, this is looking toward, um, the marsh and 3A, exactly. Um, so you can, you can really see the work that's been done. It's remarkable how quickly they can move and mobilize with big equipment. Um,
Just highlight the retention pond.
Oh, yeah, exactly. And there's a, is there another slide that shows that closer?
The pumps, yeah.
Yeah, right. So we'll, we'll get to that, but there is a, there is excavation de-watering, de-watering going on, and there's a retention pond there, um, to allow sediment to settle and for controlled rele, release of water as needed. So obviously, you know, as, as everything is being dug up and it rains, or snow melts, or whatever, and you dig, groundwater comes up, so there's got to be a way for it to be processed and then moved off-site appropriately. Um, the next slide, ah, shows the observation well. So these will, these will remain in place throughout the life of the construction, uh, project, I believe, to monitor water levels. Um, and these were completed just a week ago or so.
There's two of those, and they're right up on the high fence line, up at the top of Otis Hill.
Right. So if you remember from the design, there'll be two levels of retaining walls on Otis Hill, and I think that's at the top level.
That's very top.
The top level, correct. The next slide shows that excavation, um, de-water, de-watering process and the retention pond, um, that'll be in process throughout the work, uh, in that area. And the next slide is kind of neat, shows the temporary play space that's been put into, uh, into effect. So inside the fenced areas, what used to be the tennis courts. Um, those were removed, mulch was put, wood mulch, bark was put down, um, also kind of the rubber mat surfaces, so it's completely accessible, uh, as well. Um, a number of identified, um, play equipment, uh, pieces were relocated. New hardware has been ordered, and once, um, that gets certified, that'll be ready for, for use by the students. Um, and there's a couple of pieces that were newly ordered that are coming in the next couple of weeks, and that'll be installed. Um, so we think maybe the first week of February, this will be ready, uh, to turn over to the students to use. Um, so that's right around the timing that we thought it would be. Um, you know, for the most part, we, we made it off limits after Thanksgiving for the month of December and January. So we, we were hoping that by the beginning of February, or right around there, we'd be able to get the kids back outside as much as possible. Um, yeah, so I think that's what we have. Um, if you had any questions, we'd be happy to answer. But we're thrilled about the progress. We're very happy with the contractors so far. Um, things are on schedule. Um, we met just last week. Um, uh, we actually spent quite a bit of time looking at interior design, uh, which is exciting. Um, so it's, uh, everything is going well.
Joe, any questions?
Um, well, first, it's just incredibly impressive how much work has been done. Um, the speed, um, the skill, uh, of, of the work, and the town is, um, they're aware of this project. I mean, people call, they drive by, and they, wow, look what was done. So, um, congratulations to, to, to you and to your group. Um, a couple of questions. Um, to what extent have there been, or do you anticipate there will be disruptions to the op, to normal operations of Foster School?
So we're not anticipating any disruptions.
Okay.
Obviously, when you're trying to have elementary school aged children pay attention during the day while active construction is going on, there may be some interruptions. But we've actually heard from the principal and staff that they've managed very well and they're not really seeing much disruption at all.
Great. And in terms of traffic flow, parents picking up kids from school, that's, seems to be unimpeded.
We try to prevent any trucking occurring during dropout from eight to eight thirty.
Right.
And then in the afternoon around two, two thirty.
Yeah, I mean, that's in fact what you told us beforehand and it's good to hear that that's, that's what's happening.
Yeah, and the principal put in a plan and he, you know, made sure it was socialized very well with, with not only staff but parents. So, it seems to be working so far.
And what about neighbors? Have you had compliments, complaints, anything from, from the neighbors about the work?
Yeah, I've, I've had.
The all new it was coming, so it's not a surprise.
We've heard nothing negative.
Okay.
I've had a couple contacts that have just asked questions, informational questions or expressed excitement about it, but we've heard nothing negative.
And we also sent out a notice right before they were going to take all the trees down to the abutters just so it wouldn't be a surprise, what are you doing tomorrow?
Right.
So, I think that helped and everybody's been expecting it. I haven't heard any negative. We set up a, an email site for people to send questions to or comments and we haven't received anything.
Yeah, interestingly, there's work going on across Downer and that new residential development that people have said is much louder than what's happening on our side.
Because they're blasting.
Yeah, they're blasting over there. So, interesting.
We had one, one complainer request to use more cleanup effort on Downer. Some dust got out on the roadway just from the trucking, so the contractor's been asked to do a little bit better.
We jumped all over that.
Yeah, I mean, communication is the key and it sounds like you're on top of that. So, that's great. Have there been unexpected bumps along the road that you're, that you're encountering or it's pretty much going according to plan?
Yeah, not so far. Everything, everything's been going well, on schedule. All the work that's been contemplated is happening as we've contemplated. I will tell you that we couldn't be happier with the cooperation we received from planning and concom staff leading up to the beginning of work. You know, we negotiated a shorter timeframe for certain submissions and they worked with us on that. They reviewed things, they had peer engineers jumping on it to review it timely. They were very responsive, they came out to the site, we met with them. It was all very positive and, and we couldn't be happier with how it's worked so far.
Well, I mean, the staff is reflecting, I think, the commitment of the town and the will of town. We are invested in the success of this project, so I'm glad that's coming through.
I think we've also moved, besides this part of it, we're also moving forward on the design phase of it. Our architect spent a full day last week going over the plans with all the teachers for the different areas, just to make sure this is what we're designing. Are there any final tweaks you want? So, they've done that. We're meeting with fire and safety on Friday to go over final plans with them. So, that's also moving forward because when are we going out to bid for that?
April.
April. So, we need to get finalized plans up and running for that. So, that's also moving forward.
Just one, one final question, Ray. Part of the presentation involved what's happening with the removal of earth. And the town has a special, a general biol dealing with earth removal, whether it can leave the town and the process. I assume you've gone through whatever needs to be, with the hoops that need to be done to make sure we're honoring the restrictions there.
We have.
Great. Thank you. Incredible work.
I had just one more comment. Today, you should have seen an email that had the project funding agreement attached to it. In November, December, you just did the project scope and budget.
Right.
This is a different document. This is the final agreement for your funding. So, we'll be helping usher that through for signatures. It's very similar to the project scope and budget agreement. So, there'll be documents for you guys to sign and then we've got to get it submitted back to the MSBA.
Yeah, it's really, the, the, the project funding agreement is probably the most comprehensive and probably the final agreement that gets signed, that covers the scope of the agreement of the funding, which actually has already begun. We've already been submitting and starting, I don't know if we got the first reimbursement, but we will be very soon, if not already. And it includes, you know, maybe 10 or 15 exhibits which encompass kind of everything that we've been doing so far with the project, from the educational plan to the budget, to all the town votes and everything like that. So, similar to the project scope and budget agreement that was signed, we'll need this board to, and it's a 30-day turnaround, so we're happy to come back and review that with you. It requires a vote of this board authorizing execution as well as town council to certify as to the authority.
Great, thank you. No other questions?
Excellent. This is very exciting. Thank you for bringing this to us and providing an update. It's nice to see how much has, has been done and obviously a tremendous amount of work. So, thank you. And I'm thrilled to see that I know it was first, the first phase was under budget and, and we're on schedule so far. So, that's, that's amazing. Thank you. My only concerns were, you know, how the students were being impacted and then abutters. And it sounds like you haven't seen any issues yet. So, certainly keep us apprised of that, but no questions.
Yeah, the best two words I heard tonight were under budget. It's really nice to hear that, so, it's good to hear. So, you know, having three children to foster, I can tell you that Matt Scheifeld, who's the principal, is doing a wonderful job. I mean, great, showing great leadership with the foster community, getting, you know, the, the students, everybody through the first couple of phases of this. And the faculty and staff has always been wonderful there and they're continuing to show just how great they really are with, with the children that go there, so. But this is great progress, you know? We want to get this built as quick as possible and get this in place and get this beautiful new school we're envisioning here as quickly as we can. And I guess all I can say to you, whatever you need from us. So, you know, I get those emails, Chris, as you know. So, if there's an action item on there that you need us to take action on, just let us know immediately. Say, hey, we need you to take action on this or take this up, deliberate and vote on something. Bring it to our attention so we can, we can help you along. And if you need anything beyond that, you know, let us know how we can assist you.
Great. We are all looking forward to taking a tour of the school.
Yeah.
We do have, in the trailer, we have some extra hard hats and vests. If somebody comes to the site, just make sure you wear boots. It's super muddy right now, so I wouldn't recommend coming to the site right now, actually.
Okay. If we could enlarge the Zoom to see if anybody has any questions or comments, obviously no one in the room right now, but if any members of the, well, we don't have a lot of people on here. All right. Let me just ask, so any members of the public have any questions or comments about this agenda item? Seeing none. All right, thank you very much. Good evening. Take care.
Thank you.
See you again. Great work.
Great job.
Do we have John Davenport here to come back?
I do not see John Davenport on our, but we, I'll circle back with that after Sue. All right, next item on the agenda is the FY22 fund balance memo presentation. And we do have Sue Nickerson with us this evening. Sue, good evening.
Good evening. Can anybody hear me?
I can hear you.
Awesome. Good evening. I just wanted to present the FY22 fund balance memo. As you know, we do this once a year, end of June 30th, and this is for FY22. At the end of June 30th, 2022, our total fund balance was $48,532.91. This was an increase of $735,384 from the FY21 fund balance. The total annual expenditure per our town financial policy for FY22 was $101,897.794. So, the percent of unassigned fund balance to total annual expenditures was 31.71%. The amount of excess unassigned fund balance, which is over 20% of our TAE, with the $13,988,88. The table below shows you the difference of all the different fund balances. We do not have any non-spendable or restricted. Our committed fund balance was $3.7 million, and that was including the stabilization funds, special articles, and unused, non-excluded debt. Our assigned fund balance was $9,353,836, which includes encumbrances and subsequent years expenditures. You take those away from total fund balance and you are left with unassigned fund balance of $35,477,647. Now, the change in fund balance is attributed to three categories. Surplus of revenue of approximately $3.63 million, a budget surplus or turnback of approximately $4.45 million, which includes $2.1 million in receivables from federal COVID related reimbursement. And minus the use of fund balance of approximately $7.35 million. The next page will show you the two tables of surplus revenue and surplus budget. The surplus revenue is basically all attributed to local receipts. We were very conservative in FY22 due to the COVID, but the town again comes back very, very, very tense. Most of the major increases in local receipts was from licenses and permits of $720,000, motor vehicle of $693,000, ambulance fees of $404,000, and mail packs of $303,000. Charges for services and penalties and interest were $300,000 each. Total general fund expenditure surplus is, is the next table of about $4.4 million. As you can see, every facet of the government turning back money. I just want to reiterate, we used $1.2 million of our funds. We've got Medicare money and the education budget used a lot of their SAP funds. And that is why the surplus is so large. We usually do not have as big of debt. Does anybody have any questions or anything in particular?
Liz, any questions?
So, I think, Sue, just to thank you for putting this together, first of all. I know it's a lot of work, but critical to what we're, we're trying to do. So, to your last point, in terms of the budget surplus, I mean, the education number is so large and, and that's because of the, the federal funds, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. In terms of the revenue, the variance regarding the, the light plant receipts, what is, I'm just surprised that that was different than what we budgeted.
Yeah, well, we forecast in the article, it's a, it's a floor of $450,000. They usually give us $500,000. It is a four number, so they deny it, but in the last four, this, and for FY22, it was $487,700.
Okay. Okay, I think that's it for Ray. Well, actually, I have, well, just one other point. On the first page, I know you talked about the excess unassigned fund balance is the $13 million. And I just want to make sure I'm correct on this, that when we're thinking about what we have in terms of excess unassigned fund balance, we've kind of already earmarked $7 million to be used.
That is not included in that.
Right, okay. So, just, just so people understand that. So, what we really have.
Good point. I was going to point that out and I forgot to. This is the end of June 30th, 2022. So, special town meeting within November, so $7 million has been spoken by our business.
Okay. Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Joe, any questions?
I do, and I'm trying to figure out how to, how to ask it. To what extent will excess fund balance be a recurring, something that's recurring and that can be forecasted? So, that to the extent that we are looking at the need for revenue on an ongoing basis in the future, we typically don't assume that we've got lots of money from excess fund balance, fund balance that we can, that we can turn back and use. But is it, is that a correct assumption? Can we in fact have a forecast for some portion of that that is likely to be recurring?
That's a good question and it's a hard question to answer. Because as you know, the, the TAE is always going up.
Right.
So, and committed and assigned fund balance are always variables because we don't know how much we're going to uncover per year. So, as fund balance and where we are starting to forecast to a more realistic number, that fund balance is not going to increase as dramatically as it has been. And now with the dried up, you know, the federal funds drying up fully maturely, we're not going to see turnback at this, at this level anymore.
Okay, I could, I mean.
I hope that answers the question.
No, that, that, that's, that's a great answer. Because what I've heard at town meeting and from residents is, you know, why do a tax increase? Why do anything if we have the excess fund balance? And, and if, and if it's recurring and we can forecast it, then we need to figure out if it can be used. And, and, you know, we hear that. And so, I just want to make sure that we're looking at that and analyzing the potential. But your response was exactly on point, so thank you.
You're welcome.
The one question I have, you know, it comes up every year and I've forgot, I know we talked about it in pretty good depth two years ago. The 3.7 from the sale of the Hershey House, that's restricted? I mean, we've had that money sitting there for many years now. Is it a restricted use of that money or?
That's gone.
Oh, that is gone. That is gone now. So, we have you.
For public safety.
Went toward public safety, okay. That's good to know.
Two years ago, I think it was. Was it two, some, two town meetings ago?
It did go, and it's still showing up?
Yeah, it's under restricted, but there's a zero if you scroll across. The 3.7 is.
Yeah, the three, on the sheet I've got, it's a 3.7. Okay. It looks like, okay, maybe I'm misreading, it looks like it's still there. But it went toward public safety? Okay.
I'll take the sale, I'll take, I'll delete that one.
Okay. Good to know.
It's actually.
I was wondering why it's, it's still there. We haven't used it yet. Because we need to use it if we have.
It's gone.
It is gone, okay. Any, anything else? Thank you, Sue. Joe, Liz, any else?
No, thank you.
No other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I'm not going to take any public comment because no members of the public in attendance at this point, so. All right, Sue, thanks a lot. Have a good evening.
You too, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, we don't, we don't have Mr. Davenport with us. It looks like is, is, the event is not until February 2nd.
Yeah, we could do this next week.
You want to do it next week?
Yeah.
Okay. He usually joins us, so we'll just do it next week. Okay. All right, then that brings us to item 10, which is appointments. And I do have one appointment this evening. I would make a motion to appoint Jude Kaplan to the audit committee to fill an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2024.
Second.
All of us in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm in, as well, the motion carries. And we have public comment on the, as item 11. No members of the, of the public in front of me and none on Zoom. So, I would turn to town administrator select board reports. And all right, why don't you start us off tonight?
Sure. This has been a very busy time preparing for warrant articles. I just want to add that next Tuesday, we have our next blood drive here at the senior center, Tuesday, the 24th, from 12 noon to 5 PM. We have, we have pretty good participation. Mostly appointment slots are filled. However, if folks are interested, schedule an appointment, go online at redcross.org.
Thank you. Michelle?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Liz?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Joe?
Actually, Tom, do you want to just give a brief preview for an MMA?
Oh, sure. Good idea. So, this coming Friday, we have the, the exciting opportunity to attend the Mass Municipal Association's annual conference. This has been held remotely for the last two years, so it's nice to get back in person, have some FaceTime with the other towns across the state, the other municipalities and the leaders there. The governor, new governor, Mar Healy, will be presenting at that, at this conference and she'll be talking about the state budget.
and she'll be talking about the state budget and what they are anticipating, which will help us with our forecasting. But, you know, it's really a great opportunity to get out there and see how the rest of the state manages their towns, and get new ideas, exchange of ideas, et cetera. So I look forward to this every year. I know there's a whole group of us that are able to attend this year, which is fantastic. And I'm looking forward to it.
So I was going to add that my first year on the select board, I did attend. First, when I heard about MMA, I thought it was the mixed martial arts. And it turns out, it's something...
Turns out, it's very different.
It's very different and far more valuable to the town, and...
Far more brutal in some ways.
But I got value, and I think it really is helpful for us to interact with other members of, across the state, other members of select boards, mayors. So I'm looking forward to it. That's it. Thank you.
With that, then I would take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Good evening.